Planning Commission meeting of February 27th, 2024. If you'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with roll call.
Commissioner Mahi Patla?
Here.
Commissioner Mistry?
Here.
Commissioner Scharf?
Here.
Vice Chair Linsckog?
Here.
Chair Feng?
Here.
All President accounted for.
Great.
Chair Feng, if we can request that Commissioner Scharf make his announcement about why he's on the Zoom.
Commissioner Scharf?
Okay, yeah, thank you, everyone. Unfortunately, last Thursday night, I tested positive for COVID. So even though I have no more symptoms, I did still test positive last night. So out of an abundance of caution, I decided to do this from home. So thank you for your indulgence.
Chair Scharf, if you could also state for the record that nobody above the age of 18 is accompanying your room, or if they are, that they're there?
Yeah, nobody above the age of 18 or under 18 is in the room where I'm conducting this meeting.
Thank you for helping us comply with the Brownout requirements.
Very good, and we hope you're feeling better soon. Well, actually, I guess you say you're feeling good now.
Yeah, yeah, I'm feeling fine now. I just don't want to, in case I'm contagious, spread it around.
Great. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. An unusual one since the last meeting was just the last meeting. So if everybody would like to take a moment to look at the minutes. And we will entertain a motion for approval when anybody's ready.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Great. We're doing this by voice vote?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yes.
Commissioner Mahi Patla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mistry?
Aye.
Commissioner Scharf?
Aye.
Vice Chair Linsckog?
Yes.
Chair Feng?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. The next item on the agenda is postponements. Are there any postponements?
No, there aren't, Chair.
All right. And then we will now reach, we've now at the section of the meeting, Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most places, cases, state law will prohibit the Commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. We have one blue card, we'll do these first, and then we'll take Zoom comments as in hybrid meeting. The first speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commissions, good to see you all. I just wanted to start out and talk about some of the new bills that Senator Weiner has come up with. He has produced a great number of housing bills in the last several years. And last year, he had one that we were quite confused about, but it appeared to be trying to take apart the Coastal Commission. But it was a multi-layered bill. I wound up following it through all the committees last summer. My mother lives in the coastal conservancy area in Aptos, and my brother does too. But this bill that he had was not, was just not at the Coastal Commission. It was also targeting things in city of San Francisco. So he is now writing bills that are multi-layered, which is disturbing because normally, a senator and assembly person producing bills should be producing a bill to do perhaps one thing, stop smoking, make people use water more conservatively, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm really, really concerned about the intent of some of the bills. He has a new bill from February of 2024 that he's proposed, which is another attack of the Coastal Commission. He is trying to separate the coastal areas of San Francisco out of the jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission, which would be Ocean Beach and other areas. I am beginning to wonder if maybe his intent is not to just break the Coastal Commission, but to go further. We have a number of areas in, along the California coast where offshore wind turbines are going to be put in. This is in Eureka, Humboldt, Trinidad Head, Morro Bay. They are looking at putting in wind turbines going off the coast. They are very good, I like wind turbines, but they also have, you have to build the turbines equipment at the location where you're going, in the bay on the land where you're going to be distributing them. We also have saltwater to water conversion areas, which are going in at Marina, and I, and in other areas off the coast of California. And I believe that the senator's intent is to strip local control of any of the coastal areas and give it to the Sacramento state level so that they can make the decisions about these, I would call them offshore utilities, and et cetera, et cetera. I'm very disturbed by this, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Are there any speakers on the Zoom call?
We have one, Lisa Warren.
Lisa, please, you can go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just want to quickly say that Council has postponed the discussion about the elimination of having more transparent and public meetings from most of the Commissions. And I would ask that any of you that are concerned about that, please share those concerns with Council as soon as possible, and hopefully at the meeting that it actually happens. That's it, thanks.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Any others?
Rhoda Frye.
Rhoda, welcome. You can start when you're ready.
Hi, good evening. I have more to say than I have time to say it, lots of different ideas. With respect to Valco, I was saddened to read that the developer has asked to build their project to 2016 building codes. That means no zero net energy, no electrical only, no bird safe, and suboptimal fire codes. Please do what you can to get the developer to build the current codes. And our building codes are upgraded every three years. And sadly, there's less affordable housing, and less of that housing is actually affordable. Furthermore, a new law allows buildings 85 feet or under to avoid hiring union labor. And there's a lot less retail, which we so badly need. But, you know, there's more. And the other, the other issue is that this developer has used this housing law, which actually winds up creating a housing shortage. And there, there's got to be a law against that. And, and, and also, all of the issues with regarding hazmat onsite, onsite, and how, and how the square footage was counted, this is, this is all just, just seems like trickery. And it's just very, very, very disappointing to see. And of course, you know, we have been hearing about the potential of putting a city hall on that property that was proposed by Mayor Hungway last year. And I think that's really a terrible idea, as you can see, the developer's not community-minded. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, which you'll find in the, in the comments for Agenda Item 6 of the City Council earlier, was it earlier than, no, it was last week. And that is, is that the, our finance department has inadvertently used AB 1600 fees, and those are specifically the Below Market Rate Affordable Housing Fund, to pay for the YIMBY lawsuit. And so we're looking at 170,000 or so, some of it being, some of that money was paid for our own, you know, we had to pay contract attorneys. That's an awful lot of money of BMR housing that is not, not, money that's not going to BMR housing, that's pretty bad. I have a number of things that I've written to you, please ask planning staff why the project on East Estates is being considered for a ministerial review when there are known hazards onsite through GR Tracker. Also, I'd like to see large development projects in the city, even if they won't be coming to Plan and Commission for decision-making, project on East Estates, and also the Fontana Restaurant site. And also, explain whether there are any changes to the hotel plans. I've seen that these are coming through, and I'd like those, please make sure that they're built to current, current building codes as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
San Ar.
All right. Welcome, San Ar. You can start at any time.
Yes, hello, Commissioners. I believe this is the oral comments for items, not an agenda. Hopefully, is that correct? Do I have it right? Are we in oral comments?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So I did want to request the Planning Commission to please fully educate the residents on all options available to give feedback on the housing element. I understand there was a deadline of 4:30 last Friday, I believe, or last Thursday, maybe, for inputs on the draft for the housing element. However, what is not widely known to the community is that input can be sent directly to HCD on Cupertino's housing element draft. What is also not well-known to the community is input can continue to be sent to the Planning Commission and to City Council members, as well as staff, on the housing element draft. I fear that the community is not well-informed and has not been kept well-informed due to the lack of agenda items focusing on the housing element. And due to the lack of widespread outreach and communication, insufficient public outreach has occurred to gather input on the housing element. As HCD requires, the city needs to conduct sufficient outreach to gather community input and represent community input in the housing element drafts. It is extremely concerning that the most recent housing element draft allows for corner lots to be, to be marked, to be zoned as multifamily, and we know that there can be height and density waivers on those as well. We have other provisions in the draft that are extremely concerning and are completely unknown to the community. So I request that you please prioritize fully educating the community on all options to provide feedback, including direct feedback to HCD, feedback even now despite the deadline having passed, to the, to the various housing-related email IDs that have been set aside for this purpose, and to set up actual live sessions, or community sessions, where feedback can be provided by the community despite the deadline having passed. There may or may not be a fourth draft, but let's make sure that all input is gathered and adequately represented in a potential future draft, as well as input given directly to HCD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we?
There are no more.
All right. All right. We'll close the oral communication portion. There's a couple other routine items. Are there any reportable written communications?
Those were sent to the Commissioners before.
Yeah. And consent calendar?
None.
No items. All right. Very good. Let's move on to the public hearings. The first item tonight, item two on our agenda, is a hillside exception to add a porch and roof deck, as well as landscape modifications, in an existing hillside property on a prominent ridge line and associated SEQA actions. This is application number EXC 2023006. The applicant is Chris Promadora. Location, 22777 San Juan Road. The parcel number, APN, is 34222104. I guess we'll start with a staff report.
Right. And I have here John Martier, Senior Planner, who will be making the presentation, but I think this Assistant City Attorney wants to say something.
Yeah, Chair, perhaps we can ask the Commissioners if any of them have visited the site or had any ex parte communications before the staff report?
That's correct. For transparency, if any of the Commissioners have visited the property or communicated with the applicant, this is a good time to report it.
Sure. I drove the neighborhood, but I actually didn't visit the actual property, and no communications.
Yeah, I drove by, and I couldn't access. I really wanted to go see completely in and around. And this was a private road, and there was no place for me to park and, you know, go, so I just came back.
I also visited the property on Monday. Very good. And with that, we'll go back to the staff report. John?
Good evening, John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. Happy to be here and presenting this item of EXC 2023006. And as was read by Chair Feng, it's written on the screen on the first slide. So a little background on the property is located on San Juan Road, and as indicated by some of the Commissioners who went onsite, and they quickly realized that portion of San Juan Road was really an easement, going through multiple properties and whatnot. One of the challenges with many of the properties in the Inspiration Heights neighborhood is that this subdivision was done probably around 1917. And so maybe those, maybe those right-of-ways were not exactly drawn to, you know, to, to the topography as indicated by, by the reality of how it's built out. Regardless, so the background of the property is, this is, it's existing property with an existing home built in 1995, zoned residential hillside, 21. All the properties surrounding it are built out pretty much, and have the same zoning, and single-family uses as well. The property itself, as indicated in the staff report, is, is actually two, two separate parcels, but all the work, the vast majority of the work will be done on the one on the, on the right, as you see right there. The yellow line on the screen is there to represent the prominent ridge line that runs through the middle of the, of the existing 5,000-square-foot home, and of the yard, and which is essentially the area of work to be done. So the application request is, is very simple. It's a, approximately replacing the existing lawn and terrace area in the rear of the property with an approximately 2,041 square-foot rear yard paved terrace area, which include the following structures, spa, outdoor kitchen, a few fire pits, planters, and a trellis. As well, over part of that terrace area would also be a 568-square-foot roof deck, accessed via second floor of the existing residence. In the hillside ordinance, Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter 1940 prohibits any additions to existing structures within the 15% sightline of a prominent ridge line unless an exception is granted. Obviously, the modifications to this parcel are actually on the ridge line, so any type of structures to be placed on this, on the ridge line or on this property, as well as onto the home itself, would require a hillside exception. Here's the existing site plan. As you can see, this is the area that's, most of the works would be, it's not working. Usually, I'm able to write on this, I apologize. So you can see the existing lawn area and the brick patio. And what's circled right here is, is where the works will be done. Proposed is this, you can see the, the terrace off area, slightly under 2,500 square feet, that has a spa, the lounge terrace, dining terrace, entertaining terrace, fire pits, and DG path that goes around it as well. Here's the rear elevation that shows existing and proposed, the existing on the left and proposed on the right. Essentially, the, the rendering on the right is essentially encompasses pretty much all the work that's going to be done. You see the small retaining walls, none of them are over three feet tall, which is consistent with the ordinance as well. And you see the, the roof deck going over parts, the 500-square-foot roof deck going over partially the, the rear yard area and whatnot. Many of the windows are being replaced throughout the home, and the color of the home is going from a light blue to more of a darker colored, more, how do you say, a natural tone, which is even more consistent with the current ordinance as well. So one of the things we require for hillside exceptions or any development in the hillside, whether it needs an exception or not, is a slope analysis. We have a threshold of, on top of, you know, thresholds for development on, on prominent ridge lines, we also have thresholds for development on slopes that are greater than 30%, if they're over 500 square feet. So when the applicant submitted this slope analysis, the request was to hatch out the areas or the portions of the, of the parcels that are over 30% grade. And you can see what, right there, the hatchout areas are the portions of the partial, portions of the parcel that are over 30%. So where the proposed work is to be done is really on the, on the flat areas of the, of the parcel where the, where the house is. There it is. So to, there's many findings we, the staff has to make in terms, in terms of supporting hillside exception, or recommend support for hillside exception for, for Planning Commission. A few of them are that all other parts of the parcel have been explored for feasibility of development. And so when looking at this, particularly that last exhibit that you saw on the previous slide, the only feasible location for terrace areas on the flatter portion of the prominent ridge line. The sign, when you cite such development on that, on those portions, it minimizes the need for excessive grading, as is adjacent to the home. One of the standards that, and exhibits that the applicant needs to submit, as well as was attached to the staff report, was a visual analysis from vantage points that are defined in the municipal code on the valley floor, to confirm that if someone's standing at those corners, that they can look up the hillside and their, their view and their, the visual impact, those folks looking on those corners won't be, won't be excessive. And so they, those vantage points were provided, photos of the vantage points were provided, and it seemed that there would be no impact from those, from that photographic evidence. Further, all development standards, including grading, setback, flat yard area and floor area limitations, are met or exceeded, exceeded in the sense that met by a large portion in accordance with the hillside, hillside ordinance 19.40. So this brings the staff's recommended action to Plan and Commission in accordance with the draft resolution that define a project that's been from SEQA and approve the hillside exception. The next step is that the Commission's decision of this project is final, less than appeals filed within 14 days. The decision and all approvals granted by the Planning Commission shall go into effect after 14 days. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you for the report. If there are any questions, clarifying questions from the Commissioners at this point? Doesn't seem, oh, go ahead.
Are there any presentation by the applicant?
We'll come to that next.
I'll hold up questions until.
Yeah. So the next item in, oh.
Some questions on the vantage point analysis. All the photos that were included, I couldn't figure out what I was looking at. It actually looks like this is a totally different address. Do you mind walking us through the pictures? They were linked in the?
In the packet.
Yeah.
Very into the packet.
My apologies, Commission. We're having some network issues, I'm trying to work through those as well.
Okay.
We're going to try to pull these up on the screen.
If I can just get a minute, I can, I can move it over to the shared file.
If anybody else has any other questions in the meantime, we can help answer.
So were there any written communication from surrounding residents, objections and stuff like that?
No, we sent out about 70 notices, and we had a couple of questions, just clarifying questions for a couple of residents, but nothing in objection to the project.
Okay.
All right, can everyone see my screen? The vantage points?
Not yet.
Nothing yet.
Screen's rebooting, okay. I did my part.
For those of you who are tuning in, we're having some technical difficulties, trying to get some images up on the display.
The program is being rebooted.
So can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just wanted to confirm, because I noticed there's a lot more glass, the windows and the doors than there were before. Have we looked to make sure there's not like a significant amount of reflection that's going to be coming from those, if you're looking up at the hillside, or?
Typically, we've looked at the bird safe aspects of that, which will be, it's in the municipal code, so that, you know, prior to issuance of building permits, we'll have to review that for conformance as well.
All right, we have the images?
We do, we do, absolutely. And so, so the corners are, so these corners are predefined within the municipal code chapter for hillsides, and so we take those vantage points. You know, these are actually street view, I believe, right? The applicant's right here. And point to the direction of where the home is. And you can see, this one's not as clear, but you can see the writing. Ah, now it works. Right there is where, where if you were to look towards the hillside, that's the direction would be. You know, typically, there we go. Much of the, that hillside where the home is located is obscured by, you know, trees and, and, and other structures within the valley floor itself. So here's another one, would be in that direction. One, two. You see the hill be just through there. And please stop me if you have any questions.
So is there, yeah, is there some like designated distance from the hill that they're, they're supposed to look from? Because this is, the, the first one was about a mile and a half to two miles away. Is that how it works?
They actually, the, the municipal actually establishes corners, so the corner of this street and that street. So this case would be Hyannis Port and Linda Vista Drive are predefined.
Okay, okay. That makes sense then. It seemed a bit arbitrary when I was first looking at it, but okay.
Any other questions? All right. So the next thing we'll do, we'll have a, if, if available, we'll have a presentation from the applicant. We normally would let that, I see in the, the agenda, it says eight minutes. So you'll have eight minutes to address that. And we'll follow that with public comment.
Okay. Myron, ready to go? Okay, well, good evening, Commissioners and staff. John, thank you so much for all your time in looking into this. So this first slide we have here, this is just showing the existing conditions of the front. We can go ahead and click to the next slide. Existing conditions of the back, click next slide. So then the goals, the design goals for the project, the client came to me, and it was, we'd like to update the architecture. As you can see, it has kind of a traditional look, lots of ins and outs in terms of planes, lots of gabled roof lines and whatnot. They want to get a more contemporary look out of it, if we can do that. Update the color palette to something that would blend more with the hillside. Improve the entry area, improve the outdoor covered porch area with connection to the interior, like a little bit more indoor-outdoor kind of space connection, and improve some interior relationships as well in the living room, dining room, and breakfast area. And then we'll also, we also did, you know, as you've seen, an update to the landscaping, which as soon as I'm done, I'd like to have Alyssa come up and present just for two minutes. I'll try to wrap mine up quickly, so she has at least two or three minutes to talk about the landscaping. about the landscaping portions. That was just to improve the layout of gathering spaces, refine vegetation to more native and drought resistant type plants, and also add a spa. Next slide, please. So here we just have the existing site plan, just showing the, you know, that existing landscape and the porch that's there. Go next, next slide. And then here's the transformation, you know, of doing the backyard terrorist porches, as well as the modifications to the architecture. Next slide, please. Looking more closely at the floor plan. Here we have just the existing conditions again. Towards that backyard, you can see like the living room, dining room, breakfast and family all kind of in a line there, all kind of stepping. Go ahead and hit next, please. Then here we're trying to clean things up. So we have things aligning, trying to align up the facade to try to give a little bit more contemporary look. And then internally opening up some of the walls to create a more of a, of a great room, kind of a feel between the spaces. And then in terms of the family room connecting to the porch, we're going to transition from just two sliders to a multi slider that will open up and connect to the outdoor porch area. Next, please. And the upstairs, that's the existing conditions. If you click next. Then you can see how, again, how we're aligning up some of the elements in the back there in terms of the balconies and the facade. And then here we have that roof deck area that's part of the porch for down below. Next, please. Just looking at the elevations, here we have just the, you know, that blue colored stucco. It's very traditional, which has coins on the corners, brick in the front area, and then the blue stucco around. And we have the existing roof that will remain. Click next. And then here you can see the transformation to something a little more contemporary looking than what we're shooting for, something that'll blend a little bit more with the hillside, going with like a split face stone at the entry area, as well as kind of carrying that accent throughout the project. Sticking with the existing roof, but changing the color of the facade, and then updating windows. We are going to be using bird safe glass. And we do have, there's a sheet that you can look at that shows the appropriate amounts of bird safe glass that we meet the requirement for that. Next slide, please. And then just looking at the side elevations, next. See the transition there. And showing the material positive, there's a sheet that shows all those things in more detail that you can look at within the set. But there you can see how, you know, updating the garage doors, again, the siding, the change of the stucco color, adding the split face stone and whatnot. Next slide, please. And then just lastly, again, looking at the perspectives and hit next, and we'll just see the transformation from that existing to something hopefully a little more contemporary for our client. Next slide. And then looking at that rear facade, and final slide. Next, and there we go. And so here it comes, and then that would be our final look that we are shooting for. So one more slide, and we'll go to the landscape, please.
Hi, good evening. So I'm just going to kind of quickly go over just some of the landscape elements that we're shooting for, for the target of the project. You can go to the next slide, please. So this is just something you guys have already kind of already seen, but we just want to make sure that the really big, the big goals here are to have those gathering spaces for the client, keeping them in the flat spaces of the site. And really just making sure that the landscape has drought tolerant planting, low water use, being fire wise with our plant choices, and things like that for the landscape. We want to get rid of some of their existing lawn that they had and incorporate California natives to their landscape. And then next slide. And this is just a quick slide to show you, these are just a few of the many plant options that we're considering for their landscape. Again, these are drought tolerant plants, low water use, fire wise, keeping with California natives as much as possible. And then the materials, we want to also keep in connection with the new architecture. So making sure that our materials are coordinated with the architecture is another goal. And making sure that we're also using things, some impervious painting instead of just all pervious painting, meaning the pathways for the gravel. And that's it, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, I think, if there are any questions from the commission for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Two questions, right? So one, one of the elevation diagrams that you showed, the rear side, it felt like, you know, the height has increased. Can we go back, go back to that? It's probably the rear side elevation, not this one. Keep going. We had, you know, top and bottom, the old and new. Yeah, so this is a front, and can we go to the rear side? Or is this the rear side? Yeah, yeah, this one, yeah. So.
The chimney caps has increased a little bit in that design, but that's, I think, exempt from height limitations normally. But otherwise, the height, we didn't change. We're keeping the same roof as is.
Is the roof height the same and the chimney heights are all same? Because it just looks like, you know, the bottom, it just height went up.
Just the chimney caps did. Because we want to clean, if you go back again, you can see it's a very traditional chimney cap on the top, if you go back to the previous. It's a very traditional, it actually has like a shape. We might be going up just a little bit with the final design. That still hasn't been fully detailed, but if that's a concern, we could try to keep it to that height if that is a concern. But I do believe those are exempt, however, from height limitations.
And, and the balcony is on the rear side, right? Back, and are there any residences on that side of the property?
There is a dress further down, but you don't see the house, the landscape kind of curves down.
Okay, okay. So, because usually, you know, one of the concerns that we hear from balconies, you know, against balconies is, you know, loss of privacy for neighbors. I just want to make sure that, you know, we are covered on that front.
Yeah, no, this, and I totally, I used to work in Belvidere where that was a huge issue because houses were really close together. This luckily, they have a lot of land in this case, so there shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, I think we'll then go to a public comment on this. Are there any courts? We have three speakers on Zoom. First, first is Sam R.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm looking at the third attachment in the attachments provided for this agenda item, the one with the visuals. And I'm concerned, as Commissioner Sejash rightly pointed out, that the visuals are actually for a totally different area. The first visual shows Crystal Ray Drive and Starling Drive, and that is in an area completely different from 22777 San Juan. So I'm really concerned that the commission is being shown visuals that are nowhere in the vicinity of this area. San Juan does not look anything like the visuals that are being shown. San Juan actually curves up the hillside and is probably one of the last roads before we hit county land or the quarry. The views from that port of San Juan should be examined from the streets downhill from there, depending on which direction the property is facing. So it would either be viewed from Alcorde Road, and perhaps Alcorde Avenue thereabouts, or it would be viewed from Maryman or somewhere thereabouts, or perhaps from hotel itself. So it's unclear to me, looking at these visuals, that we have the right attachment. And I would ask that, in the absence of actual data on the visual impact, as well as an actual analysis of which homes were in fact, or which streets were in fact updated about this view change that is going to be happening, I don't believe we have sufficient data to make a call on this, and you will need to get more data before make a call. I would also add that the hillside views are extremely important. I appreciate Commissioner Seema Linsco grazing the impact of, of the reflections coming off the building. I would urge you to use maybe brown walls as opposed to shiny glass walls that will cause an impact to the views and the viewshed that we have in that area. I would definitely like to see the actual impact of views, because this is not San Juan. What the views we are being shown in the third attachment is not San Juan. This is further downhill where Crystal Ray is. None of these streets that are being shown are the topography of what San Juan looked like. I urge you to please look at Google Maps right now and enter the addresses for Crystal Ray and Starling, and you will see it's nowhere near San Juan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, next is Rhoda Frye.
There. This is the second time I've pressed unmute. Anyway, getting a little confused. I do appreciate the planning commissioners looking at the fenestration with respect to birds and reflectivity. Also, as a reminder, and I think Sam pretty much encapsulated that part, is that, you know, our general plan, both for the county and the city, really values our views of our hillsides. And certainly, this project, you know, in many respects is an improvement of what has been there in the past. Nevertheless, hoping that more, I don't know what latitude you have in, in, in making improvements, certainly the idea of reducing the height of the chimney caps. And, you know, maybe they should also consider getting rid of their gas fireplaces if they have any, because then you don't need any chimney caps or chimneys, or wood burning fireplaces. Those, those are, those are going to be things of the past. But the one thing that really stuck out for me, so last but not least, is that the stone that's outside on, on the, on those retaining walls, and of course, we don't have all of the views of those retaining walls, it really looks pretty bright and reflective, and, you know, trees die. So, you know, we don't want to get into a situation that over time, from the valley floor, we're going to see a lot of those retaining walls. So I really appreciate if there's possibly to get those retaining walls that are outside and any of the pavement to be a little bit more, more blended in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. The next speaker. Last up is Lisa Warren. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. So, in general, I just like to say, I think the architect listened very well to the clients and made the changes that they had on their wish list, and I think that's all good for them. I did note that the images all show the same roof, but in the wording that I read yesterday, it talks about the roofs changing to be metal roofs. But then I heard the architect say they're staying the same. So I would just caution that the wording, the language matches the pictures and what has been said before you approve, whatever it is, that you're going to approve. That's it.
There are no more speakers, Chair. Great, let's close the oral communications section. And you guys can have a seat. We'll bring it back up here for any further questions and discussion.
No comments. Is the exterior changing from wood panels to stucco?
The existing is stucco, it's just like a blue stucco, so we're changing it to a darker stucco.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just for some reason, it looks like, you know, wood panels. Okay, good, thanks.
I, my only comment, I, so I had maybe two things. One of them was, we were, the commission was provided with a full plan set, and so it was very interesting to see the bird safe calculations. And not actually, you know, I was, I think I was here when we, when we approved that part of the regulations, but hadn't actually seen it, the execution of that in, in a home. And, and I think the other thing, I maybe just, I had had a little discussion with the PO about the, the images that were included, the site images. And I don't know whether you wanted to comment on that, if there was any further comment on that. It does seem a little odd, given the location. I was familiar with the location, the general location of where this was, and so I thought it was odd that one of the site points is by Kennedy Middle School, which is.
Right. And just a little bit of background on that. When the RHS ordinance was developed several years ago, the desire at that time was to protect the views from the valley floor of the hills. So what people, the public sees from the floor looking towards the westerly hills. And they had selected these intersections. They are quite a distance away, but with the understanding that it's for the public at large and not necessarily for individuals closer to a particular property. And as a result, some of those intersections are quite a distance away from where this particular development is.
Commissioner Charf has his.
Oh, go ahead.
Has his hand raised, just so you know.
Oh, I just, can the applicant comment on one of the residents' question about the roof? Is it, is it the same roof? Are you switching to a metal roof? Are you replacing it with something else? Or what's going on there?
That, that was a typo, so we did, we were planning to go to a metal roof, but then in budget and looking at it, we decided to just keep the roof because it's not that old. So we're keeping the roof. So wherever that piece of text that called out metal, that was a typo, it was supposed to be changed to keep existing roof.
Right. Oh, so what is the existing roof made out of? Is it composite or tile?
Yeah, just composition shingle.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. I think that's all I have.
I have one question, right? So is there an opportunity to kind of cap that chimney? Because it's sticking out, like, if you really look at the diagram, right? So the old one versus new one, the chimney in the middle is kind of, you know, looks taller. I don't know.
I mean, that's for discussion with the planning commissioners, if that's the desire, and there's a consensus that's within your ability to do that.
I don't feel strongly that we need to make any changes to it. It's, seems pretty subjective.
Yeah, I, I mean, no one's going to see this except the homeowners. I don't know that it matters. I, I think let them have the, the chimney toppers that they want.
Yeah, I have no comment on that. I think the only, the only other comment I would have is that, is with regard to those site locations. That may be something that, I would just say as an advisory point, that may be something that, that we want to look at, you know, if there's an opportunity, just to have it be something that is meaningful, you know, meaningful for the projects we're seeing today.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I understand what is required, but it would have been, it would have been good if beyond what is required, we could have also seen how it affects the immediate neighbors on either side, whether it's required or not, because I think that that would have been a good data point for us.
Noted.
Very good. With, with no other discussion points here, I'd like to entertain a motion. Anybody want to do this?
All right, I make a motion that the planning commission make a determination that this project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15303, and that, and that we approve the application for hillside exception, application number EXC 2023006, subject to the conditions which are enumerated in the, the resolution beginning on page six.
And is there a second?
I'll second your motion.
Great, any further discussion? I'll just comment that it's really nice, this application is not the largest possible home that could be built on the site. It is not trying to be, you know, pushing to the full limits. Looks like a beautiful place, and I think it's great. All right, let's vote. I think we need to do this voice. We're doing it vocally.
Okay.
Commissioner Maripatla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ministry?
Aye.
Commissioner Scharf?
Aye.
Vice Chair Linskog?
Yes.
Chair Fung?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll change the seating up here and move on to our next item.
Good evening, planning commission. You're going to have to excuse me a little bit. I'm having some network issues, so I'm going to do my best here. If you could just give me a few minutes to pull some stuff up.
Sure. Should, should we officially start this item, or do you, do you need, you need more time than that?
Just five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
If we can call a recess, that would be great.
Yes. We could, we could take a five-minute, five-minute technical break here.
Thank you.
Great. Yes. Yes, 7:40. Thank you very. Meeting back to order. We've resolved the technical issues, and thanks for your patience. With that, there is, let's see, on the agenda, we had no old business. We do have an item of new business. Item three on our agenda is the 2023 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. And our recommended action here is to receive this report, the current state of this report. For that, we'll turn it over to staff.
Yes. Good evening, Chair. Can you see my screen?
No.
Oh, great. Okay. Okay, I'm going to hold this. Good evening, Commission. I'm here to present the General Plan and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for the calendar year 2023. This, these annual progress reports are required pursuant to state law. They're basically two, a two-part report essentially. One is a status update on the implementation of the general plan, policies and strategies. And the second portion of it is the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, which is usually done on forms that are provided by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And I'll go into a little bit more for each of these. With regard to the 2023 General Plan Annual Progress Report, as the commission has heard in prior years as well, much of the general plan policies, many of the general plan policies and strategies are implemented via implementation of either the municipal code or other adopted regulations that we have in our specific plans or other plans, and they're generally implemented during development review. So, we kind of go through and make sure that developments comply with our regulations, and as a result, therefore, they are compliant with the city's general plan. The edits in the annual progress report are indicated and bold and underlined and strike through also in the attachment to your, to the staff report. It was attachment one. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have specific to the reports. It's basically just a status update of what we did in the year 2023. And I know this is, again, I just wanted to caveat this by saying that it is a draft report. We're still kind of making edits to it and cleaning it up before we present it to council. Under state law, we have to present both these reports to the legislative body, which is really the city council, prior to April 1 of each year. Just wanted to add that in 2023, you know, staff, planning staff continued to process planning and building permits. That is kind of our regular operational duties in which, with which we implement the general plan policies through the municipal code and other documents that are adopted. We also assisted in responding to public inquiries. There were over 1,000 emails that we responded to, 1,300 in-person contacts, 150-plus virtual appointments, not to mention the myriad of phone calls that we responded to in between all of that. We also worked on municipal code amendments that were related to ADUs, second-story additions, and clarification with process for some uses in the BA zoning districts. We also continued work on the housing element update and associated amendments to implementing documents. That work continues into 2024. Moving and switching gears to the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, just wanted to caveat this by saying that the packet includes the draft APR. I will go through some numbers, but the numbers are still being updated. We also realized, all things technical tonight, HCD's report has a bunch of formulae and such, and I think they do have some issues with those formulas. So, the tables that you will see tonight are generated from their spreadsheet, but I do want to caveat that the numbers might actually be inflated in what you see tonight. We might be off by about 40 units ultimately, meaning we've actually issued 40 fewer building permits than are indicated in the tables. I just wanted to caveat that. So, we're still working through all those issues. But I'll give you a big picture look at the permit numbers. In terms of historical requirements for housing element progress reports, you know, historically, it was a really simple report. You reported how many building permits you'd issued in a year, and you would indicate in text your progress on implementation of housing policies, like how you have worked towards the increasing or development of affordable housing. So, did you meet with affordable housing developers? Did you disperse any CDBG funds? Who were they? Who were the recipients? Things like that. So, we kind of had a textual narrative to go along with that. However, since 2018, the reporting requirements have increasingly increased, and I will, the next slide will give you a sense of, you know, of all the information that now need to be reported. So, as each state law is implemented, those legislators are interested to see how many projects actually use their laws to move projects along. There's not just the number of building permits that were issued, but it's also address APN, you know, was it rental housing, ownership housing, what kind of housing, the date, if an application was received, when was it deemed complete, you know, if entitlement was approved, when was it entitled? If a building permit was issued, when was the building permit issued? So, there's, with the proliferation of software systems, HCD has also increased the number of, increasing data points that they are requesting. Oops. Sorry. There we go. So, dang it. There, I'm going to hold it there. Can you hear me? Okay. So, there we go. So, there are two tables that I wanted to share. One is building permits issued, which is basically, you know, an accounting of what our RENA numbers are. And this is the, we're in the new cycle as far as RENA is concerned. We're technically in the sixth housing element cycle from a production perspective, even though we don't have a certified housing element. So, the first row on here indicates what our RENA requirements are for the sixth cycle, which runs from June 2020, building permits issued from June 2022, June 30 of 2022, all the way to January 31st, 2031, I believe. So, there's a little bit of a confusing terminology here. There is something called a projection period and something called a production period. And so, the numbers that are reported in, for two HCD are for the projection period, which starts June 30th, 2022. With that said, the first line here indicates what our RENA is for the sixth cycle, and then the second to last line item shows what our building permits issued are. And there's a little asterisk next to the 128 number, and that number will likely be changing based on the technical issues once we get that resolved with HCD. I think the big picture takeaway from this is we're nowhere close to hitting our RENA target at this point. We're hopeful that we will be hitting our targets as we get closer towards the end of the production cycle. The next table shows our RENA balance if all the units that we've entitled so far were to be built. This indicates that on the above moderate category, we'll be in good shape if building permits came in for all the units that we've already approved. We would not be in a very good position still, though, for our VLI units. We'll be close to meeting our low-income units, but we will be not very close to hitting our moderate income units. And so, that's just the, again, the big picture takeaway from it. Again, that 128 number on the second row, second to last column, will change based on whatever technical information we get from HCD. And with that, I conclude my report, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Can we ask about specific projects? I just have a curiosity question.
Of course.
The McClellan project?
Yes.
That's the former, it was like a barn or a ranch on McClellan by Stelling?
Yes, there was a single-family house with a big shed.
Perfect. So, that, they're getting their moderate, they're adding moderate units by putting in ADUs?
Correct.
Are they required to have those as rentals, or are those going to be for sale?
We don't allow for-sale ADUs in the city. It is a choice that the city can make. However, the council did not make that choice.
Okay.
But those, we are allowed to count those towards the moderate income category.
Got it. So, they'll be rentals?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's still cool. That's nice. Did, and is that project, have they already put in for their building permits?
They have put in for building permits. They're not issued yet. They're under review. However, I think for this cycle, the way that you count your ADUs will also change. So, instead of all going towards the moderate income category, when the permits are issued, they will actually go towards different income categories based on a certain survey that was done at a regional level.
Got it.
So, those ADUs count towards moderate, but you know, it's not, they're not required to rent it out, right?
Though, that's, that's how the accounting is done for purposes of HCD, though they, HCD will probably be looking to have monitoring on affordability as well. So, you know, they might actually have us do surveys and things like that, and we still haven't sorted all of that out yet. But we'll see how things pan out. This is a completely new world even for us.
Right. So, those, sorry, just to go on that similar vein, the ADUs on that project were not a requirement. Were they?
No.
No.
That was a voluntary, they just wanted to build them.
Yeah. So, they could do whatever they want with them if they wanted to?
Correct.
Okay. Cool.
Maybe, oh, go ahead.
No, I have a somewhat related question. So, all these projects, you know, that come for ministerial approvals, is there some kind of a law or, you know, cap that says, you know, you can only apply these many state laws to your project? Like, if I go to a restaurant and take two coupons, and they say, no, no, you can use only one coupon, not both. But it seems like, you know, these housing projects, multiple laws are being applied.
I don't believe there's a cap. I mean, you could layer on different state laws, as long as, you know, the state law itself doesn't say that you can't use one with another.
Wow. Oh, you mean as far as, like, if you build a certain number of?
Yeah, like, you know, SB 35 and SB 330, and, you know, the one more thing, and then one more thing, I think so.
So, right, unless the law says that you can't double and triplicate, then nobody can stop you, right?
Yeah. The reason I'm asking is the Valco project, for example, right? So, I was kind of scratching my head. How did, you know, it go from 2,400 units, you know, with 50% affordable units, to like, you know, only 35% affordable units? So, it looks like, you know, they reduced the number.
Right.
And, you know, and on SB 35 project, giving 50%, you know, to the affordable homes, and then they used another state law to get a bonus on top for our market units.
Yeah.
So, as the net result is, you know, the number of affordable units now has gone down.
Sure. Yeah.
Right? That, to me, sounds, you know, very wrong, right?
Right. But that's, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to stray too far off the subject that we're on, but that is also for Michael to comment on. However, I don't believe that unless there is something in that particular law that says you can't use another one in conjunction with it, that there would be a limit. But Michael maybe can opine on that.
I was just using that as an example, right? Because, you know, the whole idea is, you know, to create affordable housing, and, you know, and I thought, you know, great, you know, we're getting, you know, 50% affordable homes there. Now, it's only 30%, you know, 34% affordable homes.
Right.
Because two state laws have been applied.
Yeah. PO, I have another question. For the projects that are entitled by the city, are any of these getting close to the expiration of their permit?
Let me go back and look. Just give me one sec. No, we did have Marina Plaza, which was sort of kind of getting close to it, but they, they filed for an extension and got an extension on their existing entitlements.
Okay.
The Hamptons must be getting close to then, right?
The Hamptons would be 2026. But they're not accounted for on this table.
Yes, right. I did, I did see that. Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Can you explain? Oh, sorry. I didn't know if I was being called on or not. Okay.
Go, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah.
No, I just wondered, what is the explanation for the Hamptons being excluded from these table numbers?
The reason that they're excluded is because in, there has been no movement on the Hamptons project at this time, even though they are entitled. They have a 10-year DA. They have not indicated to us that they're moving forward with their project at this time. We did ask for that commitment as part of our housing element outreach, and we did not get a positive response. So, we haven't included it, but if they come in, and if building permits were issued, we would certainly get credit for it. So, this is, again, a snapshot in time.
And, and there was a positive response on the, for Marina?
Correct. They, they actually extended their application. So, we're, we're going ahead and looking at that as a potential project still, yes.
Nice.
And as far as ADUs, historically, you know, what I've seen in my area anyway, is there's, when the ADU laws changed, there were initially a lot of new ADU applications, but almost all of them, I don't, in my area, I don't know of a single one that's been turned into a rental. They've, they've all been for family members. Do we have a sense of how that's going in Cupertino in terms of the ADUs that have been built?
Short answer is no. We finalized, I want to say, 43 ADUs in the, yeah, we, we finalized 43 ADUs in the last reporting cycle, and we issued 55 permits for ADUs. So, while we've issued a lot of permits and we finalized a lot, there is no way to necessarily know whether they have been rented out, or whether they're, even if they were housing for family members, that still constitutes, you know, if they're not paying rent, it's still affordable housing for someone.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, just to understand the process, because you said this is a draft and it can still change, right? Are we, is the planning commission supposed to be seeing a final version, or before the council sees it, or what we're seeing is, is again, a snapshot that's going to change potentially significantly before the council sees it?
I don't know that it'll change significant. I mean, yes, given the numbers that we have, we'll probably get reduced by 40 units potentially, up to 40 units, based on my math. And again, we're still verifying this with HCD. But, you know, we can certainly bring back, like, as an informational item after council, you know, as just like an informational report that we don't discuss necessarily. But these are just numbers. This is just data that we're pulling. This is, and what I'm reporting to you is just a technical glitch in their system, and so we just have to make sure that it gets fixed.
I actually had a related question. Is there any timeline to this other than the final reports presented to the council by April?
No, I mean, this is, because from our perspective, before it goes to council, we need a certain amount of time to kind of prepare our documents, so we have to kind of backtrack to get to this date.
Do you have information on how many SB 9 lot splits have been applied and approved in the city?
It's an excellent question. I don't have it off the top of my head. I know I've had tons of discussions with people who are interested in doing so. I know of at least one application. I don't know of any completed applications, is what I can tell you at this point, but I think one is probably under process right now. I know of one person who's interested a lot in the city, so we'll see.
That may actually be, you know, a comment we could, we could mark that perhaps. I think that there's, you know, public interest in the projects which were associated with housing bills. So, that, that might be something that's worthy of reporting.
Yeah, as soon as we get a housing project, we'll be happy to report to say that we've received one.
So, I had a quick question on the general plan updates, starting on page 51. Like all those gray and tables, are we talking about that yet, or?
I guess we, we probably can move to that if we, if there are no other questions on the.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was part of this or if.
And public comment.
Okay. I'll wait then.
Okay. So, should we, we, we're taking one set of public comment on?
It's one item.
On one item, yeah, okay. Right. All right. So, so I guess one of the things we could do here is we take public comment at this point. Yes. Okay. Yeah. And so, we, you know, obviously, we'll have a chance to kind of dig in deeper after, after the public comment section. I have a card here in the, in the community hall from Jennifer Griffin. Do we, do we have a count for people online right now?
Good evening, planning commission. I know that the staff has struggled.
I know that the staff has struggled through this load of, I mean, I, this is, you know, I've been coming here 25 years, and this is like the fourth housing, not, I don't know what we're calling it, general plan, housing element, et cetera, et cetera. And it's been a lot of work for the public. I mean, I have spent hours going over the housing element, in addition to the other laws. I mean, it's my second job, even though I guess I just go to Santa Cruz and read stuff about the housing element, et cetera. I'm going to just start out with, as you all have heard me say before, it has been verified now that the HCD numbers are wrong. Two gentlemen, Mark Breville and Eric Philseth, have verified accounting many, many times that there is no method used in the RENA numbers, they're magic numbers. And if we're going to be going any further with this, there has to be a reckoning at the state level about what we do with the housing element, the sixth cycle. I've been through the housing element cycles with the staff, Pugh, everyone, the last 25 years, and I've never seen a housing element like this. And the 4,500 or 4,300, they're wrong. Cupertino's supposed to have a lot lower amount. And I know that San Jose just is proposing now to sell ADUs, this coming back to their staff, but before we even get to that point, we have to have the discussion of the bad RENA numbers. What do we do if the state calls a halt to it? We are stuck in the middle of the third response to HCD, and I spent hours on the housing element going through it. I'm very concerned with the missing middle being thrown in there, the public had no idea. I don't want every corner lot in my neighborhood to become an apartment complex. I don't want all the houses that are adjacent to retail to become apartment complexes. The public had no idea that was in there. That's wrong, it's deceptive. It makes me think that the RENA numbers were put, put in there to try to deceive the public. I don't trust HCD at all. In that regard, it is a lot of work for everyone, it's, it's taken years. I mean, I've been in jobs where we slugged through a lot of computer stuff, and we didn't know what we were doing, and one of them actually turned out to be a complete, they just chucked it. But in this situation, I appreciate the city trying to deal with this. It's not your problem, it's the state level, and that's why we're recalling the governor again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I believe we have a online?
We actually have three.
Okay, yes.
First is Peggy Griffin.
Great, you're on.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. I am amazed at the amount of material that has to be produced yearly, as you mentioned. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Could you please display my slides that I sent in? I sent it to planning commission?
Peggy, if you'd just give us a second, we'll pull them up.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for stopping my time. I don't see them.
It's interesting, it's on our screens.
Oh, okay, now I can see them.
Great.
Now it's gone.
Peggy, we see it on our end, do you see it?
Now I see it, every time I talk, it goes away.
He, um?
Now, now it's there, okay, whoops, it's gone.
I think it might be a display setting on your end, possibly.
It usually works.
Do you want me to just tell you which slide you're on? Currently, we're on, on slide one.
Right, I know that. I was hoping the public could see my slide.
The public can see your slides.
I'm the public, and I can't see the slide. Okay.
No, we do not see them.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sharp, for sharing that. John, is there anything we can do to help?
Can you pin, pin that screen? Because I think what's happening is, it's like, it's showing whoever's talking, but if you pin your screen, maybe, I don't know, actually, you'll only pin it for him, you won't pin it for everyone, unless you have the admin.
It seems like you should be able to do that in the control room.
Yeah, somehow, whoever's talking, it switches to that person.
But that's a setting. You can change that setting.
You can change the gallery setting?
That's what I'm saying. The admin should be able to change that setting.
Take a look.
Okay, okay, I, every time I say something, it goes away. If you could just show my, the amount of time I have, and I'll continue without it being displayed, but I hope it's added to the written communication.
Yes, we, we can still hear you.
Okay, is?
Peggy, do you see a phone on your screen by any chance with your slide on it?
I do until I talk, and then it goes away.
Okay, that doesn't help either. Just give us a second while we try to debug this.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate the hybrid meetings and your patience. I do have a hard copy, and now it's staying up with, with me speaking.
Okay, good.
So whatever you did, it worked.
Good.
Shall I start?
Please go ahead.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I can't see my number of minutes, but I'll keep going. On page four of the staff report for the housing element annual progress report, it says that the, I'm concerned about BMR funding, the, the fund and it going towards the proper uses. And it says in the last sentence that the, the funds received are collected in the city's BMR affordable housing fund and expended on eligible projects with city council authorization. But, as we knew, learned at city council meeting last time, the YIMBY lawsuit cost, which was far more, it was like $160,000, appears to have come out of the BMR fund. And that's a lot of money when you're talking about people who are in need. It shouldn't, lawsuits should not come out of the BMR fund. Next page. And the city council did not authorize that use of the funds. In attachment one, general plan, annual progress report, page 23 of 67, it's referred in the middle of the page, it talks about Valco. And it says that 267 of the 890 units will be part of the city's BMR inventory, but the rest won't. I want to know why, and why can't the city control them, and how do we know it's being managed properly, and will they be able to dip into the BMR funds for non-city managed BMR units? Also, recently, the city manager and the city itself received an email regarding, from the state water board, well, forwarded from the state water board, that mentioned UST sites on the geotracker, and that a site that is, has a UST entry on geotracker is always open, it is not closed. And my concern is, has the staff looked and reviewed the sites to make sure that identified sites and future identified sites are not, do not have?
10 seconds?
Okay, and, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. The next speaker, please. And you're actually going to need to unpin that.
Did you unpin it?
Or unshare, yes.
Yeah, go share it.
I did unshare it.
Go share it.
Yep, I think. Can you still see your screen?
Yeah, we're good. I think we're good.
Uh, next is Lisa Warren. Lisa, you can, can go when you're ready.
I think I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the button doesn't work every time, the first try. So, just because someone asked, and you mentioned, there, there is an SB 9 application that has, is on the books, it's for a end-of-cul-de-sac lot on Cozette Lane, and that's being looked at, presumably now, first round of look, I think. So that's just for people who are listening that might care, and because some of, I think, Commissioner Fang, Chair Fang, I think you wanted to see those things, which I think is an excellent request, if not requirement, so thank you for that. And, other than that, on extended projects, when staff was mentioning extended projects, and I apologize, because I'm working at the same time, I'm trying to go in and out of this meeting, so I may have missed something, but what I heard was, for instance, the hotels, which are coming back, and some other things, and the Hamptons question, et cetera, I just, I just wonder, because there was a question about, a statement about, for example, the Oaks, or, excuse me, the Marina, and I feel like, okay, so they're extending project, that's an extended project, and Hamptons doesn't have to do that yet, because they were given way too much time to begin with. So, it's another case of, so does that mean that no updated state building codes and no newer improvements to city ordinances like BirdSafe and Dark Sky and anything else are just, they don't matter anymore? When things go on extension, is that a consistent way that this is going to work? Like, the rise, getting to use eight-year-old building codes on these monsters that are, the codes are to make them better and safer, and the state and the city and everyone else, including, if not primarily, the developer, does not care? They can get away with that? I just, I just wish extensions weren't allowed, if that's going to be the case. You know, your time is up, sorry, start over, and we'll clean up what needs to be cleaned up. So I know you can't answer, but I really want an answer, the public wants an answer about this, somehow, some way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And the next speaker. Lastly, we have Sam Aron.
Evening, Chair Fang and planning commissioners. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Fang and planning commissioners, I wish to draw your attention to the draft for the housing element, and specifically the strategy HE dot 1 dot 3 dot 6. 1 dot 3 dot 6 talks about encouraging missing middle housing development, and specifically talks about allowing for lots zone for single-family residents to use that are in corner lots that will be allowed to develop into multifamily zoning. The corner lots in R1 zoning district develop as multifamily rental housing using R3 zoning, and then for lots zone for single-family residential that either share a property line or directly across the street from property that fronts an arterial or major collector to be developed into rental or multifamily housing, using R3 zoning regulations. And, and so there's a lot of concern that with this kind of change, particularly with then the density bonus and the setback bonus and any parking waivers, it completely destroys the character of our neighborhoods. And given the use of the new zoning code, I believe it's R4, I, I, I request that the planning commission and, and city staff look at not, sort of, destroying the character of Cupertino with this kind of zoning change, because every corner lot now becomes a skyscraper potentially, if, if density bonus is waived, and parking and height limits and everything are waived, and this is not acceptable, especially having gone through without enough public input. Again, HCD requires that you take community input, or we request that this change be reversed. You have ample houses identified already without this change, and this change is unnecessary given the part of the city plan and other zoning that has already been identified. The second thing I want to call out real quick is, when you look at some of the, some of the strategy HE 1 dot 3 dot 5, I'm concerned that you're unnecessarily doing these items to encourage housing, when in fact, the real issue is financing from, from banks, from, from debt funds at banks. So when you're delaying payment of permit fees and development impact fees, and providing flexibility in things such as parking setbacks, landscaping, this is a major concern. The city is short of revenue, residents are being asked to give up services and pay more taxes and fees, and you're going easy on developers, and that's unacceptable. Developers need to pay their fees, they're not going to make or break projects based on your fees, so please collect the full fees, and this item needs to go. And same for the parking setbacks and landscaping, please don't destroy the neighborhoods of Cupertino by giving them these, these bonuses, that are unnecessary.
Your time, your time is up, thank you. All right, and I believe, do we have any other?
We have no more speakers.
No more speakers, so we'll close the public comment section, and we'll come back up for, again, further questions and deliberation. And I think we may want to talk how we want to take a look at the, the spreadsheet.
General plan spreadsheet?
Yeah, yeah. So, any, any questions? So, I mean, there's an enormous spreadsheet here, we don't need to go through it line by line. I might suggest if people have reviewed it ahead of time, and have items that they'd like to discuss, maybe we go in groups of 10 pages, or, or something like that, and just?
Or just, address specific ones as somebody's question.
Sure.
So, I, I'm, I, yeah, I haven't finished going through this. I just want to say, I'm, I'm concerned about the fact that we are getting a document that hasn't been fully vetted yet. I, I identified some issues earlier that I discussed one-on-one with the staff that are being corrected, so that's great. And I understand, this is a huge amount of work, so, you know, I understand that it's, it's, you know, that it's difficult to get it right, given the sheer scope of the, the work and, you know, the complexity of it. But if we're being asked to formally approve a document, or even just accept it, it would be good if it was in a, more of a state of completion, that it had been scrubbed for, you know, easy mistakes. Because, like, it would be good if we didn't have to go through and, and check them line by line, which is like now, I feel like I have to go through line by line and check it, which I, you know, I'd prefer not to have to do that, I should, you know, so, so I think that's my only comment. So I, you know, I will go through. So I, you know, I will go through it line by line and provide feedback after the, you know, in the next few weeks. And I've already provided some feedback to the staff that is getting taken care of.
I guess I had a clarification question. Because, I mean, the action is basically to receive it as a draft report. We're not approving it in any way. We're not commenting on the contents of this. It's just that we're formally receiving it as a draft report. Is that right?
Correct. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer if they're outright, you know,
But
Things that you think, you know, need to be reviewed and, you know, corrected. Those are things that we're happy to, you know, we're already vetting it. Like I said, this is a draft. We're correcting. The data that's spit out by the HCD spreadsheet is the data that gets reported to HCD.
Right.
And that's the basis of the numbers that you saw in the tables.
Right.
Those tables are not really reported anywhere other than presented to the commission and to council. But the HCD spreadsheet itself has some locked formulae and things that we can't, we can't edit.
Right.
And so we're just kind of working with them to make sure that they have it fixed on there. And so when the report is generated for council,
Right.
That it's just the right numbers.
So the formal recipient of the final plan to be approved would be at city council?
It would be a report that they would receive, yes.
But also just receive, because essentially this goes to the state?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So, I mean, I'm just trying to understand. Us receiving it doesn't mean that we need to sit here for two hours going line by line? Because there's absolutely no purpose to that? I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm not asking that we go line by line. I was just asking that it be, I'm expressing a preference that it should have been scrubbed before it came to us.
To me, this is more of like an FII, right? So you're being informed of, you know, and same thing, you know, with the council, right? So
So then I think we, can we, oh, I mean, I guess we acknowledge that we've received it, and do we even have to make a motion or approve anything? Because there's nothing to approve here.
I don't think so.
You have received the report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, it seems a bit
Yeah, this is required in state law to prepare these annual reports and submit it to the Office of Planning HCD. And so it's just informational for this body and to the council. As a courtesy information for you. You don't need to have a motion. No action is required.
Okay.
And I'm happy to take, like, you know, as things come up, or if you have questions, I'm happy to respond to them offline. And like I said, we'll just continue to formulate it for the council.
So I had a couple of comments. There are really two different pieces of information here. One is the HCD report. It makes sense the way that's done, and I think it's actually very interesting. The, the fact that they changed the standards, you know, the standard in calculation does, you know, have some impact on comparing it to prior years. But I think that that actually would be something, you know, when you go to council with that, that would be something I think would be useful to kind of know relative, and of course with COVID, COVID years. That makes, that perturbs the plan. But it would be interesting to see, you know, those, the categories of things like, you know, well, it looks to me, I mean, at a glance, it would look to me that the, you know, market rate homes actually seem to be pretty strong this year relative to, relative to most. And I think that that's the kind of thing on a, perhaps not quantitative as much as qualitative basis, is that would make that, you know, the context of the report better. On the other report, on the big, you know, the gigantic spreadsheet, yeah, we definitely don't want to go through that line by line. But I do feel like, you know, because I did, I did do some review on it, and I felt like there's some color coding there. I think the color coding appeared to be somewhat inconsistent. And in that respect, this may be the same issue that you raised.
No, I raised the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's a good point.
That, you know, so in particular, you know, I, there was, there were some of these, I saw some that were orange in progress. They look like, and this is something, you know, we, we'd had a lot of discussion on this in the, my prior term in the planning commission, where there are a number of things which are the normal activity of the planning department, you know, of the community development department. And so some of those are orange here, and some of those are not. And I think in particular that area of identifying the, these are the normal actions. They probably are worthy of a, you know, these are the normal things that the department does as its normal business. Those are probably good to highlight, and it would probably actually be a lot more things than, than, than are showing up in orange. For, for the colors that you're using, perhaps things, if those are more project-based things that were significant in that year, that would probably make this information more digestible. And I think that, you know, there are kind of some major, you know, one of, I think one of the things, again, somebody going through this, again, cued by color, you would say, okay, well, there's, obviously there was a lot of activity related to the housing element. Right? And so those sort of takeaways, I think, you know, rather than it being a, you know, here's a thousand lines to look at and, you know, and pick at the details. It really is more, what was the flavor of the activity of the department? I think that that reflects, that would be more useful both for the council and for the, for the public. And then the other item I wanted to mention, there were actually a couple of comments in the public comment, and one from Commissioner Mudi-Pala as well. I don't know whether, you know, one of the things, this is in the, you know, I was, I was on the planning commission when the original, the original VAALCO plan was, was submitted. So one of the things that I remember being a point at that time was that the calculation that was done for the original, the original, the original submission, the calculation of the required affordable housing was incorrect. That it was not, the housing is, the affordable housing requirement, the 50% affordable housing requirement is not 50% of all units produced. It's 50% of the market rate units produced. And that actually, I believe that is actually the cause of why the end result of an SB 35 project is something like in the ballpark of just a little under 30%. It's because, you know, there's a certain number of units. There also are some regulations when they, when they're applying a bonus multiplier. There are bonus units that are produced as a result, and those are not subject to the county. So there are, there are a couple of different things there. I believe that's probably why the, the new version is, has changed in its composition a little bit. But again, that's, that's something that, you know, of course, you're the experts to, to address that. There was also a question about, about BMR. And I think that was just, there was a, there was a comment in there about the RISE proposal. They talked about a subset of the total number of low-income units, only a subset were subject to city administration. And again, I could be wrong on this, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, in a number of the projects that had come forward before, including, including the Hamptons, the management of, the developer has options with regard to the management of finding an appropriate management body to, to vet the tenants and make the placements. So I don't know whether that's, whether that's the reason for that, you know, for that subset. But it, you know, not all of the affordable housing in Cupertino is managed through the program that the city administers.
So having these two separate queues, how do you arbitrate? Like, you know, to me, that sounds like a problem. So there should be a single queue, which is another city-administered queue for all the affordable houses in Cupertino, right?
I think they all have to follow the same rules, but, yeah. You know. This is something, this is the thing I remember that the, that the housing representative had, had, had talked about, that, you know, that this was, you know, a particular project can choose to, you know, they can, I mean, you know, the city hires a nonprofit to operate this. There are, there are other nonprofits that could be used as well, or, you know, a division of the company.
Can I just comment, are we sticking to the agenda item here? Are we just talking about stuff in general?
No, no, we should, I was about to chime in. We should return back to the agenda item, which is this General Plan Annual Report.
Right.
So let's bring that back to that discussion.
All right. It's just, you know, because, because these things were raised in, in, you know, public comment.
Yeah, I know. And the way they addressed that is, you have a quick address. You should do that, but then, you know, for broadact purposes, we cannot go into a discussion about non-agenda items.
Right. Okay. So with that, I don't think we have any further action required other than that we've received the report. So thank you. And then we will proceed on now to Yes, so it's Staff and Commission Reports. Do we have a staff report?
I have two announcements to make. One is, I know there was a lot of discussion about VAALCO. VAALCO, the ministerial streamlined project, was approved by the city on February 16th. I also wanted to announce that the third draft of the Housing Element was submitted to HCD today. So they have it, and they have, I believe, 45 days to review it and turn comments around as a result of a stipulated judgment that was entered into. So we should be hearing from them in about six weeks.
Great. And are there any commission reports? A number of people attended the all-commission meeting yesterday. Stephen, do you have any report?
Uh, no, I have nothing.
Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is future agenda setting.
So I have one item that I want to propose to put it on the agenda for future. This is to do with, you know, I'm just learning, you know, we have a lot more contaminated sites in our city than, you know, that we would think. And I know VAALCO is, you know, water under the bridge, and, you know, DHS is handling it. But there are other sites, you know, that are being, you know, ministerially approved. And then I also know that, you know, there's a project in Saratoga where I believe, you know, it was ministerially approved, but then there is some kind of a deed restriction, whatever, like, you know, so all the buyers, you know, that are buying the homes now, you know, have to deal with the deed restriction. So I want to get ahead of it, so I would like to request something where, you know, agenda item that kind of, you know, talks about, no, here are all the sites, you know, that within Cupertino that are contaminated and, you know, and, you know, qualifies for housing or qualifies for, you know, ministerial approval or don't qualify. Because I believe, you know, the state law says, you know, if you are in certain lists, like in a COTC list or, you know, or geotracker list, you know, then you cannot use the ministerial approval process. So I want to get some clarity on that. So I would like an agenda item that kind of, you know, goes through, here are the 25 sites, you know, that are on this list. And, you know, they may or may not go through the ministerial approval process in our city.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I would point out that because of some other recent actions in the city, it's even more important now that we, that the residents and potential buyers are informed when a project is being built upon a contaminated site and what the, what the remediation is on that site. Because now, if there's no EIR anymore, how would they know? But yeah, I would, I would second that request as an agenda item.
And to me, you know, people come to Cupertino for education, and they bring young kids. And so we want to make sure that, you know, they are well-informed when they make purchasing decisions.
Right, I believe the
Yeah, so there's a suggestion, and it's been seconded, and so the staff will take that into consideration for a future agenda item.
Okay. Yes, and I guess that's it. Thank you very much. We adjourn the meeting at 8:37.
Good.
Thank you.